Mr. Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Here.
All right, with being spring break three, you're on vacation, so it's just us. Council, you received the minutes from the March tenth meeting? Question for the from March tenth second. Ms. Davis, yes. Mr. Moore.
Yeah.
Ms. Perkins, yes. Mr. Walter.
Yes.
Can you receive current expenses written on three nineteen? Any questions?
One question, I know building cycle with our new trash supplier. Took a while to get that synchronized, does that been resolved?
Yep. They're issuing credits back on the invoices, what they're doing for prior months, so.
Okay. Then I make a motion to approve the expenses submitted.
Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Yeah.
Ms. Perkins.
Yes.
Mr. Walter.
Yes.
All right. I'm going to, we had two individuals want to be on the agenda this evening, and so I'm going to move the visitors up to now. Representative Dorothy Polanda is here this evening. Let's see, where shall I stand?
Well, for those of you who don't know me, I, my name is Dorothy Polanda, and I proudly represent Plain City at the Ohio House of Representatives. In fact, I represent all of Union County and most of Marion County, except some northern townships. I have been representing Plain City since two thousand eleven, and I run on a two-year cycle. I was redshirted, as I call it, for the first year and a half when I was appointed to replace Dave Burke when he moved to the Senate. So this is actually my third year serving in the House. It's an exciting time in the House for many reasons. The governor just gave us his MBR. MBR stands for Mid-Biennium Review. And it's the governor's way of doing an interim budget between the constitutionally ordered two-year state budget that we passed last June. It's a way of fixing unintended consequences of the budget that was enacted last, last June, so that everything in this MBR directly relates somehow to the budget that we passed last year. Under Ohio's Constitution, the House has so many days to review it and to make amendments or to pull certain provisions out for separate legislation. We then pass it on to the Senate, and they have a similar amount of time to make modifications before it then goes finally back to the governor for his signature into law. During this time, most other work in committees and in session is put to a halt while we concentrate on the MBR. It's over a thousand pages, and so our speaker divides it up into eleven separate subcommittees. And each subcommittee is vested with a certain portion of it so that they study it and they report back to the rest of the group what they think of it and what we should do with that and with that part of the budget. So it's very interesting, very challenging. I serve on four committees. One is the Agriculture and Natural Resource Committee. That's a very interesting committee. We deal with everything from exotic animals to the shale excavation here in Ohio. I also serve on policy and legislative oversight. And this is the committee that has heard all the election reform bills. Third committee that I serve upon is the Judiciary Committee, and that's because of my thirty years of experience as a lawyer in this community. And I serve as vice chair there. We, that's the committee that hears a lot of adjustments to the criminal sentences. We've also heard a lot about human trafficking, and we voted on many bills of that nature. Finally, I serve on the Rules and Reference Committee, and that's the Gatekeeper Committee. All new bills go through our committee, and we decide based upon the nature of the bill which of the seventeen standing committees should hear the bill. I'm very proud to be sponsoring several bills myself at this point in time. I am sponsoring an Ag Omnibus Bill on behalf of the Department of Agriculture that will address some new areas of animal agriculture, primarily creating a new category of diseases of concern so that animals, farmers who engage in animal husbandry are not automatically reported for some kind of a new disease. Gives the director a lot more discretion in terms of dealing with diseases that are relatively new to Ohio at least. As a personal note, I love being a subscriber to the Plain City Advocate. I read it faithfully, and I make myself try one recipe out of each and every edition. Some are good, and some are better. So with that, I would open it up to any questions you might have of me or to tell me what, what is of interest and concern to the city this evening. Anything you'd like to say or any questions?
You know, I'll ask you a question. Is there any chance that all the cities and towns are going to get more money from the state?
Well, there are several provisions with regards to local government funding. And I will tell you, one part of the MBR relates to this severance tax bill. Severance tax is, we've always had a severance tax in Ohio, but the severance tax has been on the vertical wells. We have some here in Plain City. The severance tax that the governor is talking now about now is a severance tax on the new horizontal or fracking wells. And so this part of the MBR will say, we've got to determine what is the fair amount to charge for taking and extracting this, this resource out of our ground. But once we gain the revenue from these developers, where should it go? And I will tell you that there are two fights about that issue. What's a fair tax to charge the developers, but who gets the money? And under the current proposal, the majority of that money goes to the local governments in southeastern Ohio because it is felt that they have the, the most amount of damage and impact to their infrastructure. I will tell you that I'm an advocate for something else, and I believe that all local governments in our state should benefit from this severance tax. All of our communities are in some way, somehow providing resources for that excavation down in southeastern Ohio. We're either sending off our children down there to work. Some of our companies right here in our, in this county are providing machines that are being used down there. And, and I believe for that reason that we all should share, all of our local governments should share in some of those resources. The MBR is like the Weather Channel. It is constantly changing. You will read every week about something about the MBR, but don't believe anything until you see what the governor signs because it's changing all the time. Lots of conversations about it, lots of emphasis on how we can help our local governments. And that's where, where I'm coming from, so. Any, any other questions about that? And there are other aspects of the MBR that may provide additional local government funding. I will tell you that one of the unintended consequences of the governor's budget last year directly impacted Art Tole's Technical Center. And Kim Wilson has been a wonderful advocate, coming to me saying, Dorothy, what the Senate did in amending what the House did caused us to lose state funding. I invited her down to the State House. We met with the chairman of the Finance Committee in the Senate, who quite frankly admitted he did not understand that different technical schools receive different types of funding from the state. And so we are looking to see an amendment to that funding for our technical school here through this MBR. And Kim has been a wonderful advocate and a wonderful source of information to me. You know, as legislators, we deal with and study a myriad of issues, and we cannot possibly be expert on all of them. From exotic animals to human trafficking to criminal sentencing reform to school funding. And we rely on people in this community to reach out to us and say, Dorothy, I want to talk to you about this issue. I'm very proud to say that almost all of the legislation that I've sponsored has come from constituents calling me saying, I have a problem, please help me with it. Right now, I am sponsoring a piece of legislation, House Bill four eighty, the child restraint law, at the request of our Union County prosecutor, who said there's a real flaw with that, with that piece of legislation. And after he explained it to me and after I discussed it with several of the interested parties and groups, they agreed that there is, there's a problem with that bill. So it's great to work with our local partners, great to work with our local elected officials and our community members, most of all. And I, I would just welcome you to call me and with any, any concern that you have, that we could sit down. I'm always here in Union County on Fridays. I'm at the State House on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. I'm in Marion on Mondays. My contact information is on my sheet. I've also provided to you another brochure called Constituent Services. And a lot of times, people don't know all the things that we can provide to you in terms of outreach as a state representative.
So what are things with tax, with taxes? I know they're supposed to.
What kind of taxes?
Was it HB nine?
Centralized collection of taxes.
Well, it's not centralized collection. There is no centralized collection of taxes in, in House Bill five.
Okay.
That was House Bill six oh one, which was in the previous General Assembly, dealt with centralized collection of, of taxes. That is gone. It was replaced with House Bill five, which has nothing to do with centralized collection of municipal taxes. It has everything to do with making it uniform so that if you've got a, a young fellow who works for a construction company, and he builds a house in Powell, and he builds a house in Plain City, and he builds a house in Marysville, under the current law, he's required to file three separate tax returns, three completely different forms. And, and oftentimes has to hire a CPA because he can't, he can't navigate those forms. This is unfair. All House Bill five does is create uniformity of the tax filings that, that an individual would have to do. It also calls for a five-year study on the NOL to see what the impact of this will be before it's actually put into play. So we recognize that each of the municipalities deal with this local income tax in a very different manner. And we're, we're, we've commissioned a special group to study this on an individual basis. There is no centralized collection of, of city taxes. Now, I would oppose that because my concern would be if we centralize it, will we ever get it back? And, and I would, I would be concerned about that. Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. David Kell is with us this evening as well. He's from Madison County County CIC. He's going to come and share a little bit about what they are doing.
Just a, a brief overview of the Madison County Future Incorporated, the CIC. Really, the first page is a few items from the. It's just an overview of, from the revised code, what the powers of the CIC are. I can give a deep, brief background. First, my name is David Kell. I live, or I live in the city of Springfield, working in the city of London at seven three zero Kenny Boulevard. I've been with Madison County Future Incorporated since November eighteenth, I believe, was the day I started. So, what's that, approaching five months now. I, I serve as the executive director of the Madison County Future Incorporated. I'm housed within the Chamber of Commerce. I work closely with Bill Blazer, who's the, who's the president of, well, the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce. We also have Nicole Del Santa in our office. She does everything within that office. She's that, she's that person for us, so. And just, just give a brief, brief background of Madison County Future Incorporated. I'll read this part, this first part here, and then I'll kind of go in depth about what we can do as an organization. Just in nineteen, in two thousand nine, Madison County, Deer Creek Township, Jefferson Township, Steve London, Village of Mount Sterling, Pike Township, and, and the Village of West Jefferson joined forces with Madison County Chamber of Commerce to create a community improvement corporation, a CIC, to serve as the principal regional economic development agency for the county and its communities. Nowadays, it's affectionately known as a LIDO, Local Economic Development Organization. L E D O is the acronym. The current board is made, the current board directors is made up of members of our community, both from the public and private sectors. The second page I gave to you all are, are our current board, board directors. We are currently looking to recruit a couple more board members, and we have one in mind that we're working, you know, working to recruit for our board. The CIC is a not-for-profit, five oh one C three, public and private partnership established under the Ohio Revised Code to promote and carry out the economic development efforts of its communities. Its purpose, as written in articles of corporations, are to advance the economic development of Madison County, Ohio, by exercising the following powers. You can read each one of those. I can summarize it very quickly. As an organization, we're more flexible than a typical, than a government organization, a government, economic development department under a local government. We're able to borrow money. We're able to loan money to any, an individual, to a business. But what a qualifier there is, we, they must all, they must approach a private lending institution first to see if they can get a, a loan through that organization. If they cannot, then they can approach us, and we can look at potentially, you know, loan an individual business money through, through our resources. We can purchase, sell, or lease property. We can serve as a real estate agent for a community with, that's looking to sell publicly owned property. Example of this, if you've been re, reading recently, in the city of London, we are serving as their real estate agent for the Armory Building, and they're also looking at us to serve as a real estate agent for a couple of the properties. This allows them to do is bypass the normal process of, of trying to sell property or lease property through posting bid notices and papers. It, it cuts down costs and time to, and it makes it much more easy to, to sell and lease property or purchase property through, through typical real estate transactions. We also are able to give grants. We can be an agent of, of a grant application. So for instance, with the county commissioners, back, gosh, first couple weeks I started, they had me go to a, a, put together a grant application for the capital budget bill for those requests back in, in late November. So we were able to put together a grant application that could be considered for that, for that, for that fund. We can also, as I mentioned, administer grants. Once, we can also administer grants if we were to receive those grants from local government, as yourselves, or county commissioners, or city, or village, Village of West Jefferson, any community that we are designated as the local economic development organization for. Couple, a few other things that we do as the local economic development organization. We manage retention and expansion, business retention and expansion programs for different communities. That's, this is very important, I feel, as a, as an economic development practitioner. It's important to focus on the businesses that are in the community already. What a retention and expansion program allows us to do is meet with those businesses in the community, establish those relationships with them, so they know that they have a single person, person of contact they can reach out to with any needs they may have while they're trying to run their business on a day-to-day basis. We can gather information and, and feedback from them about what their needs are, what their opportunities are, what their challenges are, and we can bring resources to them, whether it be within our organization or through the local, regional, or even state resources to help them address those opportunities and challenges. We also manage business attraction for the different communities. We work, we oftentimes get leads through either the state, Jobs Ohio Organization, through Columbus Twenty Twenty, the Regional Economic Development Organization, or the RIDO. But we also sometimes get it directly into our office. And what we do then is the first person that we reach out to, if it's a specific site they're looking at, we reach out to the local community directly as well as the property owner. If it's a, if they open up region-wide, say the Columbus region, I send emails to Kevin, I send emails to the representatives of each community and work with them to bring the best proposal and property for that particular lead. If a lead moves forward, so I would, a, a lead is what I would call a general inquiry. If somebody kind of asks for different properties, maybe consider for a, a business expansion or a business, business located into, into a community. If it moves toward, towards a project, we start to really talk about, you know, the possibility of a company locating the community or expanding it into a community. We also work with those communities to, again, put together a more in-depth proposal to try to win that, win that project for that community. Let's see. We manage incentives and, or tax abatement programs for different communities. I currently work with the city of London, Mount Sterling, West Jefferson, the local townships that, they have CRAs or enterprise zones. I worked to put together the, you know, for a deal we did in Mount Sterling recently, we worked with the local community to put together language for a, they have an enterprise zone down in their community for a recent project for a, a tax abatement of a particular term and percentage. So I've worked with them to put together those agreements. And then every year, we evaluate those agreements through the TERC Taxes and Review Council to make sure that they are in compliance with the, and meeting those expectations of those agreements. I also put the information into the systems every year and do the reporting for the different communities. I do have, and this is a conversation I had with Kevin and Mayor Atkins a couple of weeks ago about, are we able as an organization to put in information for Plain City in both the CRA in Madison County, but then also Union County? And the answer is yes. I have the passwords that I can put into, you know, I can enter that information in the system and update them every year. If agreements are met within the, within the community, then we would go through the typical TERC process to evaluate those different agreements. Through our office, we also do a lot of marketing. We're picking that up quite a bit. We'll admit that we have not done a lot of marketing outside of the county with the, well, I've been here five months, but just looking, reviewing everything. We need to do more marketing outside of the county. Through our Convention of Visitors Bureau, our CIC, and also our chamber, we are looking to do more outside marketing, focusing on communities around the Madison County, Plain City area, but then also eventually further out statewide, probably region-wide as well. So we're going to be doing that. In the very near future, we actually met with a gentleman this morning that's going to do some graphic design for us, and we're going to put together some good materials. And I'd be more than happy to share that information with you all and actually get your input as well as we develop those. I think this will, my gut tells me that marketing will fall within the strategic plan that we're looking to develop. We're developing a three-year strategic plan for economic development in Madison County, and we will include Plain, Plain City. Actually, we're going to have Jenny Brill and, and John, John Rucker participating in the strategic planning process. That's going to be on April first, April third, and April eighth from six to eight thirty each night at the Madison County Chamber office. So we're going to develop a plan that's going to be able, that different, we're going to use internally, but then also allow the, all of our communities to kind of, once it's, once it's complete, you know, present that plan to the different communities. It's going to be a public document that is going to be available to anyone who wants to take a look at it. So we're, we actually have a good group of public and private participants that are going to give input, and we want to make sure that we have all communities and different industries at the table so we can, so we can gather input from everyone, so it's all encompassing within the county. Let's see. Bottom line is this, I'm working, I would be working for you guys. I do work for you guys as an organization. We'll make sure when it comes to attracting business, you know, review what, what you, as a community, want with, within your strategic, your comprehensive plan, your strategic plan. You know, I, I know based on feedback you guys received, the community does not want large box retailers. You know, that we won't look to, you know, if that's the community's wish, we won't look to attract those types of businesses. But then we'll also support and, and local downtown businesses and local community businesses. We're not going to, and what I meant by that previous comment, we're not going to deter business, but we're also working for you to, to try to bring the type of business you want within the community. That's what we're doing. So I don't want to make it seem like we return a, a business or anything like that. So yeah, we would just work to attract solid businesses and solid jobs to your community, and that's what, that's what we're going to be doing. So, any questions? I hope I kind of outlined a little bit of everything that we do within our organization. We're growing, and we're bringing out a lot more, bringing out a lot more objectives and goals within our organization that we'll share with you all.
David, you said something about administering grants.
Yes.
Do you do that personally?
Yeah, I will be doing that, yes, absolutely. My background, just real quick, I didn't get into that. I was with Green County. I served as their Director of Economic Development for two years before coming to this position. Four years before that, so total of six years, I, four years before that, I was the Economic Development Specialist within the county. And before that, I worked up in Lorain County, serving as an economic development and community development specialist as well. So that's my background.
Now, as far as your grants, are those for the government, the village, or is that for the business who want to open businesses?
Well, I, I think we would explore. You know, I know other CICs, CICs in other communities are exploring grants for downtime revitalization, whether it be loans or grants for facade improvement programs. You know, we can explore if our resources will allow us, and maybe that's something explored in the strategic plan. If it's a thing that the community wants, we can explore using our resources for that. I don't know if that's, you know, we could all explore, I can't say for certain that would be what it'd be useful.
Okay. I guess one of, I can't speak for council, but it's kind of come up a few times. And I noticed that you did mention Madison County, and then you said, well, we could Plan City. Plain City kind of feels like, that one county thinks we belong to the other county.
Half in, half out.
Yes. If, if we do belong, are we going to be a priority?
Absolutely. Oh, a hundred and ten percent, yes, yes. All right, you know, I've talked to, talked to Kevin and Mayor Atkins. I mean, we, we would be, it doesn't, you guys give us a call, we'll be up here right away. I want to work with Ms. Brill on doing R and E and retention and expansion in, in the community here. Again, small business, large business, it doesn't matter. We're going to be working for you all, and, and whether you're at the, even though you're at the northern end of the county, we can, it's what, twelve miles or so from London? We can be up here in about fifteen minutes or so without speeding.
Because it's, they can attest, it's going to be my pet project. I, I really want to get this downtown, revitalize. We have too many empty storefronts. I want to do all I can to get businesses in there, so.
Well, and I did a lot of work with the Fairborn, back in Green County, with the Fairborn Downtown, what they call Betterment Association. It used to be a business association, but they wanted to make it more community oriented. And then also the Downtown Xenia, Downtown Xenia Business Association, Merchants Association. I did a lot of work with them, too. So I'd be more than happy to, to get involved even more with, with the community up here with regards to downtown and other, and other things. So if I, I didn't mean to make it sound like.
It's okay.
I just, I, it, it's, it's something that we want to do is include you. And that's why I want to make sure somebody within Plain City, and luckily we have two people now, is involved with the strategic planning process, so we get input from you as a community, and we can make sure that your interests are served within that strategic plan as well.
The, John Rucker is with the UPCO.
Yes.
And they have an economic arm of that. And so it's key, I think, especially right now where they're trying to take a new look at that. And we used to have a committee within the village. We don't anymore, so it, it needs to be a priority for us.
Okay. Absolutely. I would love to sit, sit down with, with you as council or anybody else who's involved and, and, you know, get involved and help, you know, get momentum behind that group again. Absolutely. Yeah. Sometimes I, I think, I try to, I, I bring on too much, but I, I care enough and care too much about, about this, this job and the community I serve. So, you know, take my word that, you know, I'll participate and be a part of whatever I can up in this area.
What is the best way to contact you? Email or?
Probably email. I have it on my phone all the time. Cell phone is probably second. Third would, would be office phone. Honestly, I'm, I'm out quite a bit.
David, CBB?
Yes. We are working on standing that up. Nicole Del Santa is working on that. Are, are, we're putting together a new website. That's, I don't want to say for definite when that's going to go live. Gut tells me mid-May, late April, a website will be, a new, our new website will go live. But then also, again, we're going to be putting together some. But then also, again, we're going to be putting together some new marketing materials and we're willing to be, we, we want all of our communities to be focused on. So input from, from the village here is going to be very crucial. So, you know, I can work with Kevin and, and any other person that you guys deem appropriate to put together good information and language for Plain City. And we're going to be putting them in, we're already talking down south to Deer Creek State Park, we want to make sure in, in Deer Dutchman they have information, we're looking at, you know, maybe reaching out to the casino area, if people, in the casinos, if people are there, making sure that information is, is in that facility. So, okay, we're, we're in this area, what else can we do around here? We want to make sure that Madison County and Plain City are, are top, top of people's minds, so.
Anything else? Thank you.
I look forward to working with you all and, and I'm excited and it's, it's just, I think it's an exciting time, there's a lot of opportunity in our community and I look forward to working with you all, so.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Reports, attended the Union County Chamber Board meeting this past week. There's a lot of things going on and we talked about grants and there is money out there, there is finding it and getting some assistance and knowing what, some of those things that we could concentrate on where there would be money, so. Tomorrow is the Plain City Business Association, 8 o'clock at the Deer Dutchman and that's what Jenny Brill is over, President. And just, you received an email, just wanted to make sure you know that Patty Flowers did pay the invoice for the venture removal. Okay, Renee, do you have anything? No idea, anything? Chief?
I just have a few things. Officer Drury last week attended the Ohio State Highway Patrol Academy to become certified in the use of the radar and the lidar, that's pretty standard for new officers to go through that training. Do what and take you get 40 hours, end up what you can, so. Officer Greenbaum attended the Union County Sexual Abuse Response Team meeting at the Union County Prosecutor's Office. And then with Chief Kidd being here, report that I met with him, we, and I don't know the name of Gary's company, but regardless, it's basically, we met to discuss after-action plans in an emergency, to have collaborating efforts between the Fire Department and the Police Department, which we deem is going to be important and also encompassing with this plan, developing other entities such as, of course, the Street Department Administrator, the Department of Transportation and other local communities, so. I attended the Union County Law Enforcement Memorial Planning Committee meeting and if everyone wants to put that on the calendar for this year, it's going to be May 15th at 7:00 PM at the North Lawn of the Union County Courthouse. This year's speaker is Lieutenant from the Ohio State Highway Patrol. And then also if you want to put on your calendars, if you remember, we talked about last year was the Walkin Hershees event and this year's a second annual one, that's going to be at May 16th. And that's at Sixth Street and Court Street, registration for that starts at 6:00 and the event starts at 7:00. And that's an international march to stop violence against women, so we'll have information for that on our Facebook as well as time gets closer to this event, so that's all I have.
All right, Lieutenant.
I just have one thing to touch on, I handed all of you some minutes and plans from our clock tower committee meeting we had last Tuesday. Had some really good help on this committee and had some great people looking at the clock tower and seeing exactly what it needs and how we're going to accomplish that. And this is a little snapshot of that. It is the committee's recommendation that the clock be taken off of its pedestal and moved somewhere for repair of some of the sill plates where the clock connects to the posts. And then there's some woodwork that needs done at each clock face. And then some, some roofing repairs that need done below where those pedestals are and that'll shore up any water infiltration. We would like to get this down pretty quick, we, we anticipate that it'll take two to three months to complete the work and we'd like to have it back up in, in sometime in October, certainly if we want it up there before Christmas under the clock. As you see at the final page, there is an estimate that we came up with and that's roughly $15,000. This is a very moving target and greatly depends on how many contractors we get to donate their time and materials. For instance, a crane rental could be upwards of $1,000 to $1,500, for instance, so wanted to take it down, wanted to take it off, so that would greatly swing that pendulum if that would be needed to be paid for or if we can get that donated. I would like to start, the committee would like to start asking for donations for the, for this project and collect as much as we can toward that $15,000. I would like to ask council to consider that perhaps council can even, either give a, a flat amount of money toward that project or perhaps cover whatever donations do not cover with that. You know, if they, if it comes in a $10,000 donation and it's $15,000, we would ask for $5,000. And, any questions?
Did you make any decisions on a conduit for donations? The donations direct to the village, is that tax deductible?
I spoke with Paul about that, he's still looking into it, but at his first glance, he thought we should look at other options. I spoke with Upco the other night, Thursday night, they had some concerns about using their 501(c)(3) for a separate organization, however, there seemed to be some acceptance of it and they were going to consider it.
One of the requirements to maintain our 501(c) status and be able to do the real abbreviated filing, I think it's a 990n, just to keep our funding, I think a budget under $50,000, I could double check that and there's plenty of room between our budget and what you're saying you need if, if Upco's Board of Directors wanted to act as a conduit and be able to offer a tax advantage to people.
This is much cheaper than I thought it would.
Me too.
Why, I mean, why would we not just pay us?
I agree, it's, the clock is too important to this town.
Twenty-five or 50,000, which I thought it'd be a lot more than 15. I'd rather see us do fundraising to fix bricks on the bicentennial park than.
I agree.
I certainly understand, but I think if we can get some donations to offset that and especially with, with some of the contractors to donate their time, that would really help.
I think we can still ask for donations for that, but I still think that we should pay rather than asking our citizens to pay.
Actually, you are asking citizens to pay.
Asking them for extra.
Asking more. I mean, because.
They're already paying taxes, rings, up their water, 15,000 is not. We're char, you know, we ask them for money for parades, we ask them, we're asking them for money for fireworks, we're, and that clock belongs to the village, it's too important, let's just get it taken care of and not worry about it.
We can certainly move this into Personnel and Finances because we are working on the amended budget.
Okay.
I would expect to have one more Personnel and Finance meeting before there would be recommendations coming, council, and we could certainly discuss it at the next meeting.
Will it work in your time plan? Is that okay for time?
Sure, we'll make it work.
Okay. Who else?
I will be on vacation beginning, 8 o'clock hopefully and I'll be back next Tuesday morning. In my absence, anything that you guys need, please get ahold of Renee and she'll figure it out from there.
John has had some medical concerns the last few days, so we're, he'll be back, but Renee, right now.
The others?
Kerry, Chris, the village.
Okay. Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning met last week, the on-again, off-again Oak Grove, we went through a extensive list of requests from Oak Grove and there was a few items that they wanted council to look at. One of them was the fee discount for water and sanitary sewer taps. We had 2% discount, which that price remains through the life of the project. I think what had been brought up is, is there a different way we want to provide them that in the, our previous with the copper field, is it copper field? You know, we gave it, we had them pay it upfront for the full project, so they were asking for, you know, did we want to stay with that 10%? Do we want to do something else?
Life of the project, you know, can be 10%.
So do they want to pay it all in advance like copper field?
That'd be nice.
I'd go for that.
We have, they have. We have another meeting before. Can you indicate a timeframe on this, was he like, was?
Mr. Shepherd. He's out of town this week, so it'll be next week when I give the time.
So for the minutes, he's wanting either a more, a deeper discount or, I'm not, I wasn't sure about the 10%.
He is, so he has, he has 10%, but the price remains throughout the life of the project.
And do we really want that?
It's his request.
That's his request, so I thought we granted that.
I thought we did too.
I thought we granted it for the life of the project, the 10%.
That was my understanding.
That's correct.
So, yeah.
Planning and zoning was wondering if there was an opportunity that we can deepen the discount if he purchased per phase or per life of project.
Okay. I think that you really should wait until we have more here to have that discussion, so maybe.
Do you want the minutes, so they can at least read it?
Yes, and then next meeting you can have that discussion.
The other thing was the tiffs, if we were considering tiff, I think we had discussed before that we weren't, because it was residential, we were not interested in the tiff, but I wanted to make sure that was the case.
I think that was the correct.
It was. And we also talked, and I know this has been brought up during council as well, that a staged minimum building requirement, so before we had just looked at 1,500 for ranch and 1,800 for two-story, so we're looking at having staged it in these stages, so we go from 1,500 to 1,700 to 1,800 for ranch and then 18, to 19, to 21, which is what they did in California Hills, is they had a staged.
Was the developer suggesting this?
Right, going to suggest that.
Okay, was the developer here at the, kind of design? I think if we're okay on a minimum, the market will dictate whether they get bigger, just like Copperfield, they went in and they started with 2,500 square foot houses and all of a sudden, there's a market and they're building 3,500 square foot houses, so I think for, if, if the village is comfortable with a minimum, I'd let the market float the rest of it.
I agree, so. My thinking is when you, when you look at California Hills, when you pull in there, they have the, the lower income houses, I don't want to say that, but smaller houses are where the first phase, and then when you go on back, they're the bigger nicer homes. I think it should just all be market driven.
Starred houses.
Yes, there we go.
So are you wanting to save up the 15 and 18 that we originally discussed or a different minimum? If you're only going to save.
I'm okay with those as minimum, although I had anticipated that those minimums being slightly higher, but that changed a couple of months ago.
But now's our time.
But I'm still okay with it and the reason is, is that right now our housing market is not friendly to young families, young, new start families, that they cannot reach the, the financial means to grab a $250,000 home early. And I think we need to have some variation in housing stock and, and not set the minimum in such a way that we deter young families from coming into the community.
And maybe this is one of those things where we use it as, it's a negotiation tool.
Colleen, items, 14 and 15, I was, I see the comments there, but I'm not sure.
So 14, we, we talked, we put in, there's no promise to this fee limit, we, we don't control that.
Okay.
And on 15, the turn lanes, that would be the responsibility of the developer.
Which is one of the things they changed at the last minute, I think. I think the village had talked about annexation on, and I'm not so sure that that should, I think Paul was checking that, wasn't he?
I think that's still out there.
I think it'd be good to get the feedback from Paul to see, you know, you know, what the cost versus the benefit is, because one of the reasons we're told we can't control the speed limit is because we don't control the land. If we annex, we control it. Along with the expense of maintaining the roads, but.
All the way. Yeah. The other thing that was brought up is the owner of TikTok came in about sandwich signs for the businesses and the number of signs with it in front of the business and would like us to relook at how many signs can be, or can be in front of a business. So I believe we had said that it had to go to BZA.
It has to go to BZA for variance, but she really doesn't.
Or to DRB.
That we had discussed, creating a committee or having a, whatever that.
That would be outside the scope of the design where you work.
Yeah.
They have a very narrow scope of responsibility and that deals with compliance with federal standards or renovation, rehabilitation, things of this sort.
I think, Darren, you're saying that we, we have a separate, we asked, we asked. Yeah, but look at it from, because it's back to sign code issues and. Yeah, but look at it from, because it's back to sign code issues and here was a sign code committee that brought forward the last recommendations. And so maybe that's the route we need to go again because she has two frontages and she's limited to one sign and she feels like she at least needs two.
I will say this, the sign, the, the sandwich signs she puts up, they're uniform in appearance, which I think is a plus. I think that type of, uh, the uniformity, maybe with a village logo throughout the uptown area would also be nice because I know there's other businesses that want to do that. Or real concern is people putting up cardboard signs, uh, which we've seen in the past.
I think our signage codes need to be looked at again because I think they were all done before the bypass. And now that the downtown doesn't have so much traffic, I think they could be a little bit more lenient. I know it's a big concern to a lot of new businesses coming in. Kevin was talking today about somebody that was considering coming in, but was concerned about what they could do. So maybe it's time that, since the downtown has changed and we're trying to revitalize and, and let it be a little bit more laxed.
Well, Darren even suggested maybe having it for a short time, you know, a limited time period where we allow to have more until the businesses grow in town.
To get things moving.
Quite honestly, I think it does fall under the umbrella of planning and zoning. If you want to set up a committee, funny, but planning and zoning really would need to formulate a recommendation and then make that recommendation to council.
I think, um... Didn't Darren leave it with, asked you mean to bring forward other...
To talk to some of the other businesses to make a recommendation to us, so.
I can't say that those sandwich board signs are, you know, I don't see it as an eyesore. Although I did question the number, the quantity that I see out there at times, but, uh...
And I think that was the problem was the quantity. I mean, she does have a wider sidewalk, which she discussed. I mean, the smaller sidewalks, it does make it a part of the traffic.
Our last sign committed meeting, we didn't, we weren't allowed to work on the downtown at all. We didn't have anything to do with the downtown signs. It was just out.
You need allow.
What I mean, it said we were supposed to work on, but not in the uptown area. So we didn't do anything about the uptown area.
Why was this? So that's why we needed a committee?
Your team. They need me to stop it down there.
Want to try? I'll take it back to downtown and, um...
I think John might be able to find some of the historical documents that could help you. Mike George came up with a really nice concept about 10 years ago about sandwiches.
He was there.
He went after me.
Yeah.
But Mike could be a good piece of, or a bit of reference as well.
Okay, thank you. DCA? Not tomorrow.
Kevin, anything with CIC?
I think we covered that. I do want to add, we are active in the PCBA too, whether it be Nicole or myself. I usually try to make it this, the 26th, I won't be able to make, but Nicole will be there. So we're, we're active in that organization as well.
Karen, not here. Personnel and Finance?
We had our backup meeting we were supposed to meet, I believe it was on March 10th. We canceled that duty on this, but we did meet on the 17th. I think we had a very productive meeting, minutes have been distributed to council members. I think one more meeting with Personnel and Finance, I will include the comments on the, the clock tower. I'm hoping that we'll have something ready to present to council after our next Personnel and Finance meeting.
Fire?
Fire, the fire chief's here.
Yeah, you report instead of you.
I get Jim off the hook.
Yeah.
Hopefully, I had asked Kevin to forward out our annual report to everybody. Again, we're, we're in great shape. We've, we've done some things as far as looking to our future. Our big push for this year is going to be the revision of our, our internal documents as far as our standard operating guidelines as well as our personnel manuals. With that, the other focus for the year is going to be on some different trainings. It has become very apparent to me after a short amount of time that we don't do anything alone. And, and what I mean by that is we respond to just about every agency that we go to with other organizations within the community. We spent, you know, a couple nights here this past month in Marysville with several large fires. We've had four or five departments down here for the couple fires that we had, you know, it... Speaking of which, let's see where they're going before I keep going and make cut these.
I'll answer them.
Yeah. Anyhow, it's just, it's medicron, so I'm, they, I get out of that one. Anyhow, so where we're heading with all of that is we're going to continue to try to work with our, our surrounding partners pretty heavily. Yeah, as I've told our guys there, you know, we don't work by ourselves, so we might as well play together to, to get ready for when we have to work together. And I think that's been a, a real big focus as well. The other real big area that we're looking at is the, uh, you know, we're going to start reaching out to our community partners and, and stakeholders within the community because our five-year grant cycle's coming to an end at the end of this year. So you'll see us on the ballot again in November and we're starting that, that ground floor of, hey, how are we going to approach this and, you know, make sure that we're, we're very versed in our justification of why we're, we're doing what we're doing and what type of support we're going to ask from you as our public. So were there any questions or anything that you saw within that annual report that... Yeah, I think the, the one key factor that I saw that really, really sparked a big smile was, you know, our, our financial picture, it is very, very solid. We have done a wonderful job of maintaining that, that fiscal responsibility that, that we hear about so often. And that's, that's key to us, you know, and as, as we start to experience the growth, as it pushes from the east, yeah, going in the right direction there. I had to think about it for a second. Mom was a math teacher, I was good with numbers. But as we see that push coming towards us, you know, we're going to have to be ready for what the future will hold with us as well. And we want to be, we want to be ready for whatever the community needs us to, to provide. Did I get it all? See, I did that without taking an hour and a half.
Yeah, I figured you'd be, ah, ah.
That's not it?
Yeah.
I'll say it, Jim. Great report, Jim.
He didn't even have to pull the strings of the marionette, did he?
All right, moving into old business. We have the third reading of Resolution 714, which is the 2014 permanent appropriations.
I may have missed, pass, uh, 714.
Sophia?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Second reading of Resolution 814, accept the bid for the water tower repairs.
Move to pass second reading, Resolution 814, second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
The second reading of ordinance 114, admitting complication for hosting locations.
Flashing to approved 114.
Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Okay, new business, May, can you explain the passing of the...
Go stage, because the chief here is trying to show the eyes off. No, no, no. I think they'll bring Curly for me.
It's the Madison County, the CIC agreement that's been...
But we, we're going to probably put it on forward until we talk to David.
Oh, okay. It's been brought, I think, the last couple of meetings.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's, uh, Resolution 314, authorizing the Village of Plain City to enter into an agreement with Madison County Future Inc. to make it the village's lead economic development organization.
I'll make a motion to pass, uh, 314.
Second.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Is there a compending otherwise that we need to do?
You know, he answered the question that he would oversee the CRAs in Union County, you know, and that was, and all that, we decided all that's in order.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. And I have, uh, I know that was coming hand out, the trespassing, but nothing else has came out since then. So I just put on the agenda just in case it did come out, so.
I thought there was an amended budget, but I also thought the chief sent some information in.
Yeah, I talked to him last week. He said he was not completely, my understanding, he had another revision, yeah.
Wanted to put on the agenda just in case it did come out, so.
Okay. We're at the end of the agenda.
We did, I did attend the upcoming meeting, um, this past week.
Great.
Yes, we did as well. They did ask about, um, the bicentennial committee. They actually had some different, um, suggestions for the bicentennial committee and wondered if we're going to start that or who, what we should do, so.
Have been gathering businesses and organizations' address, addresses to invite them to one big meeting. And I talked to the Historical Society about having it there. So just need to make that happen. Yes, and that would be just an initial meeting to get people to volunteer for a committee that would begin to work out. So I'm trying to make that happen within the next couple of weeks.
And they have their, they gave us a bunch of flyers, they're night at the races Saturday, April 26th, so.
Yep, we get to buy a horse named at St. Joseph's Activity Center. It'd be fun.
I don't think...
I figured you... That's why I didn't send you.
I'll be there.
All right, anything else?
Oh, the other thing is, um, we, our company that Street and Fireworks for us, um, came out to the park and met with Scott Kentrow, I think, um, to do the drawing to go to fireworks and so on. Going well with that.
Great. Okay, last one?
Okay. I don't know if you, that don't know, my husband's Alan Perkins, he works for Washington Township. And today he had a conversation with Janelle Thomas, who is Washington Township's Parks Director. And she asked him about the bike trail and they are looking to add new members to their Heritage Trails to Trails Coalition. Um, and they would like to have a Plain City representative, preferably someone from council on their board. And they are really waiting on Stone Quarry to stop operations and hopefully extend the...
Expand the operation.
That, that's all I know. I, I am just the messenger. Okay, but they, they're waiting to come around.
Major investment, I don't...
Yeah, they come around Stone Quarry and maybe come over the, the railroad bridge that way, so.
They've always said that they, you know, it takes some sort of fencing or something to keep it separate. Yeah.
Yeah. So I just wanted to pass that along, let you know, next in Abbott's, yeah, Janelle Thomas, she's the Parks Director.
Um, yeah, I'm still waiting to ask Nick to...
Okay. Yeah, I'll go ahead and let you have that, that's a copy of the email he sent me today, that's all her family's information on it.
And don't you have something tomorrow?
Oh, yes, tomorrow, the Plain City Fireworks Committee is having a fundraiser at Jerdeutschmann. Please come out and eat and have some fun. We're going to have a silent auction of all kinds of cool stuff and we have a 50/50 raffle. You can get your Plain City sweatshirts. Um, Jerdeutschmann will generously donate 15% of your meal ticket to the fireworks committee. You can also get takeout and anything you purchase in the bakery and the gift shop. We'll also go to us, but you have to tell them it's for the fireworks fund. So that starts at six to seven thirty, eight o'clock. So I'll see you all there.
Six in the morning?
There's one in there.
6:00 P.M.
6:00 P.M.
I thought you were getting a whole day.
I see the Walters men are here. Did you want to address council this evening?
Yes. A couple of weeks ago, I addressed council about that, this, you know, leech bed problem I've had. And I'm going to tap in that 20 inch, that six inch line is like 25 feet from me. And there was some controversy about being a private line and so forth. And I've talked with Kevin and Paul for the last two weeks and, uh, looking over the ordinance, I don't think that ordinance is really self-explanatory. There was a lot of things that I didn't understand. I talked with another attorneys, felt the same way. I just, I'll let Kevin kind of address what we're talking about as far as, I like to people tapping that line with council's approval. Plus, um, during that time before I tap in, in case there's any spillage, I want to be able to run a line over and tap into this, uh, clean out, just in case, just, just for, uh, you know, safety purposes, which I, I know need it, but hopefully, uh, council approves me tapping in there, I'll tap in as soon as possible.
What, are you, um, you got an extension, right?
Yes.
What, how long?
Yeah, extension from EPA, yeah.
For another month?
Well, about 60 more days, yeah.
Okay. Just, I'm thinking that because we're short here this evening.
Yeah, I see that. I was going to address council on another issue, but I'll wait till you have a full council as far as, uh... But on this, on this, all, all I need is just, uh, an approval.
Did you want to speak to that, Kevin, or?
No, I believe all of you have received a memo from Mr. Lafayette. Is that correct?
Uh-uh. No, that was why I...
Okay.
You're not going to.
Okay.
Did you forward it to us?
I'm sorry.
Have we got a copy?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm not sure if he's done with it, if that's why it hadn't been forwarded, so I...
I didn't either, I thought maybe you did. So, um, we'll talk to Paul, make sure that that, that or something similar comes out. But as you said, the ordinance has some things that are totally clear, so we need to figure that out.
Well, we came to a conclusion, I think they should revise that ordinance, make it more clear. But only at this point in time, if council wants to give me approval or you want to wait till you have, you know, full council, I mean, the sooner the better for me, the sooner the better for you.
I need to know what's unclear in the ordinance and what council's decision is.
Probably need some pause, council. Well, I'll have Paul be prepared to speak to it at the next meeting.
All right.
And I'll try to have an answer for it then. Okay? Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to address council? Mr. Samson?
All righty.
Did anybody watch the pictures on YouTube that Ryan put on there about the demolition?
I sent it to you. I'll take it to the link again. Yeah, I will.
Thanks.
A question, could I run that line over for the time being till we did decide what we're doing with this tab? That's, uh, I want to solve that problem first. I don't know why you just wouldn't vote on tonight, I don't see a problem. Why can't tap into that 20 inch line, I mean, that 20, 20 feet from my, uh, from my line?
Well, they just don't have all the information.
No.
But how, how are you handling the overflow now?
Well, actually, we haven't had any rain, not much rain, but the spring coming...
Well, actually, we haven't had any rain, not much rain, but the spring coming, the rain, yeah, it kinda filters into my leach bed and we can't handle it, so I get an overflow and, so I mean, the cleanup's not that far, I can just run right over and dump it to the cleanup and that'd be fine, you know. I'll, I'll solve the problem for the time being, uh...
What do you think about it, Kevin?
Well, they do have an immediate need to, to empty that holding tank quite often. I would like to, you know, work with, with Mr. Walter on finding a, a short-term resolution in the meantime of the next two weeks. He and I can figure out what that is and maybe, he has a water tap, so we can certainly, um, meter, uh, what's going out, um, and possibly build from that. But I'd rather we work in that and have that, um, disposed of properly rather than over on top of the ground and, and get into a lot more trouble. So I think he does have an immediate need, the health department's aware of that, the EPA is aware of that, and I think in that respect we need to, to work with him.
Can we, can we give a temporary, let him go ahead and do it temporary and?
I would like to.
If it don't work out, he'll have to tear it out.
I, and I apologize, I thought you all were in, uh, receipt of, of Mr. Lafayette's letter. And my recommendation was gonna be to allow a temporary over-the-ground tap, um, with payment of his tap fee until such time that he can get a permanent tap. With that not being able to be done tonight, um, I don't know what that would look like. I guess maybe Mr. Walter can, if the ground fits.
But it could even affect us. If it run over his land over on us.
My concern is, well, hopefully nobody's gonna be dumping it over onto the land, but, um, if it does overflow and gets into the stream, then...
Just give me permission to run a line over to the cleanup, that's all I gotta do till I tap in. It's as simple as that. Uh, I don't, uh, I don't see a problem with that. It's a simple fix for the time being and, uh, we'll wait till full council next time when, when we discuss to tap into that, uh, that little line. But just, we can get that done for the next council meeting. Just takes a vote from council.
You're asking for approval for it above ground, right?
Pardon me?
You're asking for approval for an above-ground.
Yeah, just, yeah, just in case I have a spillage, I can take care of it, so, you know, that's, that's all I'm asking for right now.
Are you okay with that on a temporary basis?
Is that okay?
I'm okay with it.
Kevin says okay. Okay with me.
I'm okay with it.
Have the bigger discussion at the next meeting.
That's fair, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, council? Entertainer, huh?
Put it to Jim.